Good morning. The June 24th, 2025 Board Meeting is now in order. I would like to welcome my fellow Board members and the public. I would like to take this opportunity to remind the public that the appropriate place for public participation in the meeting is during your individual public comment opportunity as identified on the agenda. Outside of your individual public comment opportunity, your role in this meeting is as an observer. Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Trent?
Here.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye, are here. I'm here.
At this time, the Board would like to hold a moment of silence. I invite the audience to join. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Rendell, are there any visitors to recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, we do have a visitor today that'd like to ask Dan Wilson to come to the podium. Dan is with us from the Military Officers Association, so if he can come on up to the podium right here. Yeah, you're first up. Former Special Forces, I think you can do it. So Dan represents the Military Officers Association and a couple other hats, but Military Officers Association is a retired, a group of retired military officers, and they have a chapter here in Brevard County. They do a lot of things for our community. One of the things they do is provide a lot of scholarships to our students who are graduating. They also recognize our students who have received either a military appointment to an academy or an ROTC scholarship. And so I think Dan's going to talk about that a little bit.
All right. First of all, my name is Lieutenant Colonel Hans Hunt. I'm retired military guy, sorry there. But Dan Wilson couldn't be with us today. He's our... That's okay, though. But anyways, oh, there you are.
He is here.
Okay. Oh, there he is.
What is going on here?
Navy SEALs, go. Army Rangers, we're the best, though. Anyway, hey, on behalf of the Military Officer Association of America, we thank you very much for coming to our last event that we had. We appreciate that you were there, being able to recognize the students from your school district who receive scholarships to ROTC and then the academies. And so we're really appreciative. So what I wanted to do is come by today and present you some coins from our military association. Since we do provide a lot of support to the junior ROTC program, to the school district, you know, our Good Deeds Foundation, as a matter of fact, our Good Deeds Foundation gave our junior ROTC program, each junior ROTC program $4,000 this past year each. And so we have a very strong love for our junior ROTC program. I was a junior ROTC instructor for 12 years, so we really appreciate the support that we get from the school district. And not only that, there's a multitude of things that you guys do in our community, especially supporting military families, our active-duty service members, our veterans, and especially this swearing-in ceremony that you had here over at Viera High School. That was phenomenal, and we look forward to participating in that every year, now that that was the first one. We can't wait for the second one and the third one and et cetera. But anyways, I want to present you a coin and tell you thank you very much for your support, and we appreciate all that you do for our veterans, our military community, and military community family members.
All right, so it's Lieutenant Colonel Hunt. He's going to present you with the coin. Why don't we just come downstairs? We'll do that, and we'll take a picture as well, so we'll take a short recess.
Awesome. We're now at the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Rendell, will you read what's on the agenda this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, 26 consent items, two action items, and two information items. Changes made to the agenda since it was released to the public include the following: Revised where F-1, meeting minutes, F-22, sales, cert tax, independent citizens oversight committee member appointments, 12 Code of Student Conduct, 25, 26.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
We're now at the administrative staff recommendations. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three appointments that we'd like to celebrate today. First, we want to celebrate the appointment of Joe Flora to the position of Director of School Improvement in Curriculum and Instruction. Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you, Board members and Dr. Rendell, for this appointment. I am excited to join Ms. Harris and the amazing leaders and teachers in curriculum and instruction. I also want to go ahead and thank Mr. Raymer and Ms. Wybell for their guidance and leadership over the years. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my family, who's with me here today, my wife, son, and my parents. They have been my support throughout the years, unconditional love, and I wouldn't be where I am today without them. And to my faculty and staff at Space Coast, it has been an amazing five and a half years. Thanks for the memories, the friendships, and I know they're going to continue to do great things for these students and families in Port St. John. So, thank you, guys.
Board, if I just may, I want to weigh in on this one, because Mr. Flora has been the principal now to both of my daughters, and so I can't see you over there, but as bittersweet as this is, I know this is for the greater good of the district, so I just want to thank you for all that you've invested in Space Coast and into all the children in the Port St. John community, but you've been an exceptional leader, and I have had the privilege of walking what I affectionately call your war room, where we hone in on data, on what's happening in the classrooms, and how we're going to make, you know, improvements and gains, and I just am so excited for you to bring that to the district and implement that district-wide. So I know you'll do amazing. Thank you so much for all you've done.
All right. Next, we want to celebrate the promotion of Cleveland Reed to the position of Director of Transportation. Cleveland, come on up. Congratulations.
Good morning, everyone. I just prepared a short eight-page...
Oh, right.
I hope you can bear with me with this. Good morning, Dr. Rendell, and esteemed Board members. I am deeply honored to have been selected as the next Director of Transportation for Brevard Public Schools. Really good. First and foremost, I want to thank my Heavenly Father for guiding me and allowing me to reach this point in my life. Without his support, oh, I tell you, this achievement would not have been possible. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, if you're somewhere, for believing in me and extending this opportunity. I also want to express my deepest appreciation to my wife. You don't want to leave her out. Never do you want to leave her out. Your unwavering support has been invaluable, and I am grateful for everything you do. She's not here today, but she's out there making this place a better world as she is in the medical field. To our transportation team, oh, my transportation team, they are here today. I am excited to work with each of you. Together, we will strive to build the best transportation in this state. This, well, I should say, there is, well, much work ahead of us. We all know this. But with your dedication, I am confident we will achieve our goal. So let's get started. Let's get started. Let's get started. And trust my pace, okay? Let's get there safe, without the haste. Thank you.
Dr. Rendell, can I speak on this one, too, for a minute? Mr. Chair, can I have a moment to speak on this one?
Absolutely.
All right, I'm just going to say the North is looking like the shining star right now, so I have to admit. No, Cleveland, you have been nothing shy of exceptional with your transportation department. We have some amazing leaders there, but one of the things that resonates, it resonates with all of them, but there's something special about coming to your transportation department specifically, because it feels like home. Everyone feels like a community and is so well-loved and taken care of, and I know you're going to do the same thing district-wide, so I'm excited for you. This is a great opportunity for our county, and I know you're going to do amazing, so congratulations. Sorry, I don't mean to, I won't interject on every one of them, but like, these are my people, and I love them.
Why we're here.
All right, we also have a position of principal to celebrate, so we reached over to Osceola County and stole Wendy Honeycutt. She's our new principal at Croton Elementary School. Congratulations, Wendy. Come on up.
Thank you. Oh, wow, this loud. Okay. Thank you, Board. I also would like to thank Dr. Rendell for this opportunity and for being so welcoming. I would like to thank Dr. Remmer and Kathy for making the process so easy. Thank you to Dr. Harris, Dr. Ivory, and Dr. Clark for your faith in me. I'm coming here after many, many incredible years at Osceola County. I've had the honor to work with some amazing people, starting with my mentor and friend, Dr. Cecile Diaz, who is watching from the West Coast. I wouldn't be here without her. She's amazing. Thank you to my Osceola County family, especially mine, our Cousy Bear Cups, and all of my administrator friends who make it really hard to leave. Finally, I want to thank my family and friends. I truly am the luckiest person I know, because I'm surrounded by so much love. My daughters are the best parts of me. One of them is here after getting in at 3:00 a.m. from Wyoming, and she still got up and came with me. She is a teacher here in Brevard as well, over at University Park. The others are watching online. I am really humbled and grateful for them. I'm looking forward to working with the team at Croton Elementary. I'm ready to get started. I already got to meet a couple of them, and I can't wait. So thank you again, very much.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chair, if we could take a short recess and get some pictures, that'd be awesome.
Absolutely.
Recess.
Do you want to serve another year?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. We're good. Is it a vote or a thumbs up?
Yeah, no, it's just a consensus.
It's just a consensus. We're good.
All right.
Welcome back.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, for continuing.
Serving.
Yes.
We do also need to pick our advocacy representative, which is just a one-year position. That has to go to FSBA by the beginning of August.
I'll do it. As the lead, as the Board of Directors, it's usually that. I'll do it.
Is it?
Yep, yep.
All right, thumbs up on you, man.
Yep, all right, we're good.
Okay. Again, thanks for stepping up the board.
Yeah.
Okay. We are now at the public comment portions of our meeting. We have two speakers on the agenda items, and each will receive three minutes. Our attorney will call the speakers in order in which they signed up to speak. Mr. Gibbs?
Keith Becker and Kelly Columberti.
Good morning. I emailed this earlier, but I wanted to reiterate it. I again voice concerns on behalf of students, parents, citizens, that oppose the proposed invocation policy here at Brevard County School Board meetings. Although it is touted as inclusive and seems fair on the surface, this policy will directly infuse and entangle religion with government. Even with the best intentions, the invocation policy doesn't belong at school board meetings. Every school board meeting is an extension of the public schools they represent. Public schools exist to serve all students and all families, be they Christians, Muslim, Jewish, Hindu, atheist, agnostic, spiritual, or nothing at all. As soon as we start opening these meetings with an invocation, no matter how subtle, we promote the idea that faith is tantamount to belonging, participation, and achievement. James Madison, the primary author of the First Amendment, warned against this very type of entanglement in his memorial and remonstrance against religious assessments. He wrote, "It is proper to take alarm at the first experiment on our liberties. Who does not see that the same authority which can establish Christianity, an exclusion of all other religions, may establish with the same ease any particular sect of Christians, an exclusion of all other sects? I know you will continue to harp on the word inclusive, yet the invocation policy has the likely potential to send a message that belief, any belief, is preferred over none. This pressures, whether intentional or not, individuals, especially our students, to conform or stay silent just so they can feel like they belong. Unlike adults at a county commission meeting, there are strong pressures on our students to conform. With all the pressures on students to begin with, adding any unnecessary pressures is the last thing they need to navigate and flourish in their educational environment." James Baldwin addressed this in a different angle in his book, The Fire Next Time. He wrote, "If the concept of God has any validity or use, it can only be to make us larger, freer, and more loving. If God cannot do this, then it is time we got rid of him." Baldwin sought to make the point that religion should be used to uplift, not divide. If an invocation invokes God's goddesses or an invoker's non-belief, leaving students and attendees feeling less than or excluded, it fails in its mission. A moment of silence before school board meetings allows all beliefs or non-belief to be respected equally. During a moment of silence, everyone can pray or not, reflect, or prepare for the work ahead of them. This assures the students and the public that the school board and the county does not prefer or endorse any particular worldview. We ask that you keep our public institutions neutral, especially ones that are tasked with the education of Brevard students. Please let's ensure that all students, parents, families, and staff see themselves represented, not in words, but in policy. Please reconsider instituting this invocation policy. Thank you.
Kelly Columberti.
Mr. Chair, if I can interrupt for just a minute, I probably should have done it earlier, but it's hard on the phone. We don't have the invocation change to our policy on anywhere on the agenda, not even on information, so as a point of order...
Ms. Campbell, it's under, it's under the minutes from the last discussion for approval by the Board tonight.
Okay. That's a stretch, in my opinion.
It's something the Board votes on, and under the policy, anything voted on by the Board is up for debate.
Okay.
What's the speaker's name?
Kelly Columberti.
Okay, thank you.
Good, all right, hi. So I'm Kelly. I'm here to address agenda item, I believe it was F-9, about instructional staff support. And frankly, I mean, I'm just not going to let it go that you effectively fired one of the strongest teachers in this county and brought, I mean, basically international shame on this area. I mean, there are neighboring counties that are poaching our teachers right now because you have such insane rules that you refuse to even reconsider rationally. Also, I want to say, it's a bummer you moved the student code edits out of agenda items. I really wish the Board would allow us to speak on relevant things without playing mind games, because under the identity theft rule, I believe it was 45 or something, it's worded so that it's basically an infraction, a level four or five infraction, for students to be taking unauthorized videos or photos. And I just wanted to bring that to the attention of anybody who cares about kids and who cares about this county, because I do, and I'm not going to come to these meetings and smile and clap along like everything's fine, because it's not. And I'm just here to remind everybody of that. So that's, that's all I got to say. Bye.
All right. That concludes the agenda items, only public comments. Thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to address the Board with your concerns and suggestions. I would like to remind the public that the Board is accessible for further conversations outside our business meeting through scheduling a meeting. We are now at the consent agenda portion of our meeting. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are 26 items on the list under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. Does any Board member wish to pull any items?
Yes, I'd like to pull F-16, Titusville.
Okay.
Softball, baseball fields.
All right.
Make a motion to amend, to pass the consent without that.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion?
So, just so everybody understands, go ahead.
We got to vote on the consent first, and then we'll discuss F-16 separate, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul, roll call. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Hang on. I made a motion to pull it out. It was stored and seconded. We are voting right now on that motion to pull it out.
And it's the motion to approve consent without F-16.
Aye.
All right, Ms. Wright?
Aye.
All right. Now we can discuss that, correct?
Need a motion and a second.
All right.
I can't make a move. I motioned to take this and table it until the next meeting in July, which I think is the 24th?
29.
29.
July 29.
Reason for it is just, there's a couple of things that I had some questions on. I was calling Sue yesterday about it. Nothing shows up to be completely wrong. It's for a schedule that would be not until August of '26, so it's not in a rush, and it's for basi...
Need a second to discuss.
Yeah. We just need a second. Second.
No, sorry. All right, so I'm pulling it, sorry about that. I'm pulling it because I just, some little things that I got to check out before we pass it, we're within the window of, you know what I mean, doing a baseball softball field within that time, and I'd appreciate it if I could get the support and then bring it back on the 29th for approval. That's it. Very easy, just for verification. That's it.
This is a, this...
This is a, this project is one that I obviously is near and dear to my heart, because it's one that I have let off on. And for the community watching, it's the Titusville High School baseball field, softball field's being relocated back over to the school property. So I had expressed to the Board some concerns, because right now they're playing at a facility that requires additional security officers to be present, because it's just in maybe an area that has a little more crime than other neighborhoods. So the ask was, can we get the fields back on to the school campus? And I had some concerns as well, Mr. Susan, so I'm fully in support of you taking the time to make sure you're comfortable with the bid in its entirety, because I did have some concerns that I voiced with Sue and her team, and I sat down with them, but I know she's out of town. That makes it a little problematic for you to have that opportunity right now. So I support that. I don't think it'll delay any of this. I think this is a 12-month project. Is there anybody here from Sue's department?
No, I don't think they should even take a second.
There's not, okay. Looking in the room. Just, I don't believe it will, because she told me it was a 12-month project, and right now we're at like 13, 14 months out, so I think we'll still be within the timeframe. I hope I'm not misspeaking when I say that, because nobody's here to say that.
But it's also, just so you know, when I did this, I checked in to make sure that the, the main key is, is it's for baseball softball, so it's scheduled for August of '26. Baseball softball doesn't start until January, so we're okay. That gives it more than a year by the time we come back. Also, there was some fear about Transformers, FPL, that kind of stuff, making sure we get that out ahead. That is not anyway conditioned here. And I just wanted to say, it's nothing to do, my questions are nothing to do with a contractor or anything like that. We have a very good contractor on it. It's just seeing some processes, and I think we'll be fine and come back on the 29th. That's it. That's okay.
That's fine by me, you know.
Ready for the roll call?
Yep.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
All right. So we're done with that now, right?
Yep.
All right. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items on today's agenda.
Already finished. We did that.
We already did that.
Oh, we did.
Contact action.
Exactly what we did. All right. Dr. Rendell, please let us know about the items under the action portion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first action item is G1 Procurement Solicitations. Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to, one of the items on here, G1 L Employee Benefits Platform, wanted to kind of follow up with some of the discussions of why I pulled it and where we're going. So just so everybody understands, the, this is over the employee benefits platform. Been a vendor of ours for 23 years. I felt that I wanted to take a look at it to possibly put it out to bid. One of the issues, and just so the public understands, this is a three-year contract that has a two-one-year renewals on there. We were at the end of the three-year contract. I felt like it was something being the fact that we're trying to work through a lot of the healthcare pieces, that we could see where the market check is and put it out to bid. And when I did that, I found out that there was no way for us to do that. The reason being is, is that the contract actually renews on July 1st. And if anybody knows anything about employee benefits contracts, that process, you can't, platform, you can't just stop, because you have new members coming on, you have all these people that need to select their benefits, and it would just be a nightmare to try to stop. So the idea, what I did was I asked to pull it so that we could do that, and then I asked procurement, I was like, hey, how does these things work? So what happened is, is in January of this year, they sent, procurement sent out an email to our staff saying, hey, guys, do you guys want to consider renewing this? And it wasn't until March that Antonio Scipio had told them, yes, we would like to. That engages procurement to go into a negotiation back and forth and then bring it forward to the Board. The problem is with that system, we don't have enough time, if we see this kind of stuff, to actually put it out to bid in a situation like this. So what I would like to do is just kind of get Board direction to kind of give Dr. Rendell the direction to please go work on that kind of a selection, so that we would be able to, if we wanted to RFP some of these, have that opportunity prior to doing it. Because what we basically did was extended this contract without the opportunity for the Board to truly make that decision. And I think that, although I don't think that's an issue at all, I think that the process needed to change, and I would just like to give Dr. Rendell that opportunity to kind of look at it, come back with procurement and do it. And this is the standard from across the Board. These are all contracts and stuff like that, and in no way did our procurement do anything wrong, and no way did some of the other people. I just wanted to kind of fix that process so we could do it. That's it.
Mr. Susan, just to clarify, I just want to, this, this contract had a renewal with a, one, it had one renewal with a two-year extension, and now the procurement process is changing it, I believe, from a...
To one year.
Yeah. So it's giving, instead of, you get two years, you can renew it for a year at a time, rather than a two-year stint. Is that correct? Has somebody...
That's it. Yep.
So will that still allow, I mean, that's, so you're asked to pull this off of the agenda or no?
No, no, no. My ask, we've already, we're already approving it, right? We're in discussion right now. But what it is, is that we have to be able to renew it because of the system.
Okay.
And that one year would give us the opportunity to go out to bid now, formally processing it. And then if the, if the vendor is able to renew it and win, great. If not, it'll give us enough time to effectively bring in a new vendor and do all the things, because there's a lot to tie to it.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because my understanding of this contract was that it was, it was a renewal, originally, the original contract would have been a renewal for two years.
Yeah.
But this procurement process is changing the terms to allow the renewal for one year instead of two, correct?
And an RFP.
Okay, perfect. All right, just want to make sure I'm on the same page, because I wasn't clear if you're pulling it or what was happening there.
Yeah, no, no, no. I apologize. I may not have explained that.
All right.
So the idea is that we approve this, but then it's going to be one year, but I did want to just follow up with discussion over the why. That's it.
Okay.
I concur. I would just like to see if Dr. Rendell had any comments. You look like you were... No, we're always looking to improve processes, so if we can change the way we issue these RFPs and the procurement process, we can always get better, so totally, totally fine.
All right, good. Paul, roll call.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
All right. Dr. Rendell, will you please let us know about the items under the action portion of today's agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first action item is G2 Department and School Initiated Agreements.
Do I hear motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
All right, this will move on to the information agenda, which includes two items for the Board review, and may be brought back for action at subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items today. Does any Board member wish to discuss this item? At this time, I would like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Rendell an opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Who would like to go first on that?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I don't have anything to report.
All right.
Wow, all right.
That's right.
Can I go second in case I lose you guys in a minute? That'd be great. And I just wanted to applaud the whole team that was responsible for the Ascend Conference. It was fantastic, and in fact, I took my rally towel that they passed out to staff members that came in and showed it off at FSBA. It was a great, even though I only got to attend the first hour, it was an awesome kickoff. And I just want to thank especially the teachers that are not, and assistant principals who are not 12 months, who came in and did that great work during vacation time. Want to remind everybody that the Summer Musical, Summer Financier Workshop musicals are this weekend, so go get your tickets. You can get that off the school district website. And then, just as a point of information, we finally have a budget from the state, and in case anybody in the public hasn't seen, the legislature did keep the additional funding for APAs, IDC, and CPE. They just moved it from an add-on rate to a categorical, but I think, I want, when we were at our FSBA conference, they wanted us to really communicate to the parents and the teachers who advocated so well with the legislature on keeping that funding for those programs, that the legislature listened, and just wanted to just thank everybody who sent personal, individual, not copy-paste emails, but those individual emails and phone calls of telling how it affected their kids, because the advocacy works. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right.
All right.
That's right.
All right, well, one of the, one of the thank yous or the acknowledgements that she gave was one I was going to say to the team that put on the Ascend Conference, so I unfortunately got tied up in some personal things and was not able to attend it. But I attended church that Sunday, and I will tell you, I had a teacher come up to me that attended the conference and said this was an absolutely life-changing conference. It renewed her love, her passion, her energy for teaching, and so I think those are, those are good things to have continually happening, give a shot in the arm, because sometimes you feel like you're in the trenches and you just need someone to, you know, kind of lift you up. And so I want to give a shout out to the entire team that put that on. I know Mr. Raymer, Ms. Harris, Ms. Dampier, your teams were all very involved in that, and you guys are doing amazing work, whether or not you get to hear it or not, but you are doing amazing work, so I want to thank you for that. Other than that, I don't really have a whole lot of other things, because our schools are close, I miss kids, which that's probably, you know, it's summer, but that's okay. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Mr. Bernard Bryant. He, as you all know, has comes up and advocates on things that are very important to our community. He does so, why I'm acknowledging Mr. Bryant, is because you do so in a very cooperative tone, and that's something that our entire community could learn from. You present things in a way that is, in a spirit that is trying to make things better, never casting a stone, but always trying to find a way to make things better. And I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate, I'm glad you're in my district, and representing my district, and I just want to say thank you.
Dr. Rendell?
Actually, I have two items. First, about two weeks ago, I had the honor of attending a funeral service, a celebration of life, for Dick Blake. And I didn't want any time to go by without us at least publicly acknowledging from the dais the contributions to our community that Dick Blake gave. When I was becoming a principal back in 2001, I kind of viewed the high school principalship as an esteemed position. And there was a Mount Rushmore of high school principals in Brevard County, and Dick Blake's face was on it. And he was one of those legends, a living legend, and he was the head tiger, he was Cocoa High School. And, you know, we probably can't measure the impact that he had on so many lives as he led that school and contributed to our community. Speaking of contributing to the community, he was a Rockledge City Council member for 40 years. He was the principal at Cocoa High for, I think, 23 years, which is incredible. I've been a high school principal before. How he managed to do that for 23 years is, it's amazing. So just didn't want to let any more time go by without a public acknowledgement of Dick and the head tiger and all that he did for our community. So shout out to him up in heaven, and I'm sure he is enjoying himself up there. The other thing is, this is a business item. We did promote Joe Flora to a director's position today. That creates a vacancy at Space Coast Junior/Senior High School. We do not have another board meeting, a board business meeting, till July 29th. That's five weeks for us to not directly have a principal in place at Space Coast Junior/Senior High School. By our current policies and procedures, we can't appoint anybody without Board approval. So we'd be waiting till July 29th to do that. That's a long time to go without a principal. We can do the interviews, we can offer the job, but things wouldn't be official until then. So I talked with our attorney, Paul Gibbs, about is there a way for the Board to grant me the authority to approve a principal appointment, make a principal appointment between now and July 29th, pending final Board approval and that kind of thing. So he drafted some language, so I'm going to hand this to you. Basically, if the Board were to make a motion granting such authority, then we could go ahead and move forward with filling the vacancy at Space Coast. And then if there were any subsequent vacancies, say, for example, if we promote one of our assistant principals to this position, we could go ahead and advertise that position and appoint that person and that kind of thing. So I'm asking for the Board to consider granting me that authority for this limited period of time, so that we can go ahead and make some appointments before the beginning of school.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just point of clarification, I know the answer, I'm just for the public's knowledge. You were, you're going to consult with each one of the Board members prior to making any decision, though?
Correct. As has been my practice in the past, is anytime we're getting ready to make a leadership position, appointment of a principal, I call all five Board members and, you know, bounce the name off of them, just to make sure there's no issues or anything like that. We would do that, for sure.
I'll make a motion to issue the delegation authority to appoint school principals and others during the time that we're not able to meet, as long as we're getting communicated to as far as the direction and stuff like that. I'm okay with that.
Read his specific, he typed out the motion for you specifically, so go ahead.
I have to make the entire motion? You want me to read that whole thing?
If you want, yeah, the parameters in there. Set.
All right, here we go. All right. I move that the School Board delegate to the superintendent, limited authority to appoint